Please sign in.
So first up, we have Committee of the Whole, closed meeting.
Let's move by councillor Boam, seconded by councillor Shell. The council resolved itself into Committee of the Whole, closed meeting, to consider the following items. A, a proposed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board, federal divestiture. B, advice as subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, parking garages 197 Brock Street, 266 Beggett Street, and 105 Brock Street.
Please vote. And that carries. Alright, so good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As the mayor of the city of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. You will also see on tonight's council agenda that we have a motion of condolence for Flora MacDonald. And although perhaps unconventional, I just wanted to take this opportunity to share a few words beyond that motion to highlight and pay tribute to this passionate community leader. Flora passed away at the age of 89 on July 26th. In the days since she passed, we have seen countless national news stories describing her as an outstanding leader, a trailblazer, and force for women in politics. Her legacy and contributions are well-known to this community, and I know Kingstonians are tremendously proud to have been her home for so many years, the community who first elected and supported her. Flora represented the Kingston and the Islands riding as our Member of Parliament from 1972 to 1988. During this time, she was a strong advocate for our community. One of her lasting legacies was securing the funding for the development of Confederation Basin into the public space we know it as today, officially named the Flora MacDonald Confederation Basin. Flora was a political pioneer. She was one of very few female elected officials in her time, and went on to become the first woman to run for party leadership of the progressive conservatives and the first female foreign minister in the developed world. She was in many ways truly a trailblazer for women across the country, and in her years after politics, Flora continued to advocate and promote women's rights and international humanitarian work, dedicating much of her time working in Afghanistan. The many contributions of Flora MacDonald have made our community and country a better place, and for that, she deserves great recognition. As a community, we are having a conversation about our commemoration policy, and I will be looking for an opportunity to recognise Flora's contributions to our community in a meaningful way. So with that, we were meeting as Committee of the Whole, closed meeting. We discussed pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, and also a topic regarding parking garages. So with that, Mr Clerk, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Camden. The council rise from Committee of the Whole, closed meeting without reporting.
Please vote. And that carries. Next, I'll ask for an approval of the addits. We have an additional delegation tonight, we have a motion of congratulations, we have an additional report, for report 75, an additional item, rather, an amendment, and then an attached report. Can I have a mover for the addits, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Turner. Please vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I Liz Shell of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause three, report 76, Brownfield Property Tax Financial Assistance, 468 480 Princess Street, as my son is part owner of a nearby business.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would like to declare conflict of interest related to the August 11, 2015 council meeting, number 2015-19, report 75P, award of contract for 1316, 1318 Princess Street, as my employer, Kingston Cooperative Homes Inc., is located on an adjacent lot and in the future may or may not have an interest in the property or any potential development on the property. And as such, I have previously declared a conflict of interest regarding this property. I would also like to declare conflict of interest related to the same council meeting, report number 75R, affordable housing project funding, as the phase three on the property of my employer, Kingston Cooperative Homes, is the subject of the report.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other declarations of pecuniary interest. We do have one presentation this evening. Anne Blake, President, Beyond Classrooms Kingston, and Tabitha Renaud, President, Kingston Association of Museums, Art Galleries, and Historic Sites, will be presenting a thank you poster to council and city staff in recognition of their support of the two student weeks held at City Hall with Beyond Classrooms in January and February of this past year. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You've said it all. In January... Mayor Patterson, members of council, members of city staff, in January and February of this year, two classes of children showed up at City Hall and took over the building effectively. Who wouldn't think that was a great idea? The students had an amazing time, thanks to some great champions, some of who are in this room tonight. We couldn't have done it without you, and we just wanted to give you a very small token of our appreciation. Tabitha Renaud is President of Kingston Association of Museums, Art Galleries, and Historic Sites, and it was Cam that provided the incentive for Beyond Classrooms to get started in the first place. I'd also like the opportunity to show you a very short video from... Oh! Thank you. The children are far more eloquent than I am, so I'm going to let them tell you what they learned while they were here. We'll see you in October. Thank you.
Beyond Classrooms is a program that takes a teacher from a classroom in the school and their students enters into a unique community site. This past week, we were at this unique hall. We've also been at the Agnes Art Centre. We're moving into the River Museum in the next month, and then we will also be at the Marine Museum.
What was the most important thing about your visit to the hall? How we have a pool of homeworks and where's where the study is at? Or we learn, like what was the right to be up in our school? Like, we were always talking about it. At first, we were sure of councillors, and some of us had no clue what it meant, councillors. But then we were wondering, in that classroom or on the night at City Hall, we discovered all of the councillors, what they did, what they were, and what they do. We learned how to be, they did work, and what, how to create that motion. And also how to keep it more polite and a little... Well, we do all have a goal, and we're hard at it, and we're... We actually found that we were going to build a wing farm on that backyard apartment. Do they people who voted for it? Yes. So the ending, we were not going to build a wing farm on that backyard apartment.
Beyond Classrooms is a unique culture. Beyond Classrooms takes the teacher and all her students, her students, out of the classroom into a unique community environment. Those unique community sites allow each other to learn about the site, to learn about their community, and to become citizens that feel responsibility for their community.
Today, the students who should have gone to school took another example of how learning can become a lot, and this is how you can class them.
That was great. Got some future politicians coming our way. Okay, so we do have two delegations this evening. Our first delegation is Kenavanan Chinia, President of the Alma Mater Society, Queen's University, who will appear before council to speak to clause A, report number 75, with respect to the Queen's Alma Mater Society Temporary Road Closure Request, 2015 Homecoming Events. And just to remind all the delegations that you have five minutes.
Okay, so, thank you, Your Worship. Let me begin by expressing my thanks and the Alma Mater Society's thanks for the privilege of addressing council tonight. As Your Worship observed, my name is Kenavanan Chinia, and I'm the President of the Alma Mater Society, and we are here to seek council support for the Second Reunion Street Festival. The Reunion Street Festival arose from a need, okay, I'm getting a bit ahead of myself. The Reunion Street Festival arose from a need for sanctioned programming on the Saturday night of homecoming for both students and alumni alike. With the support of Queen's University and the city of Kingston last year, the Alma Mater Society organised the Reunion Street Festival to resounding success. It encompasses a number of attractions, food vendors, such as food vendors, a licensed area, music, and Queen-centric programme. It is a uniquely student-created solution to fill a programmatic void on the Saturday night of homecoming, when we typically see a need to get students and alumni to celebrate the Queen's spirit safely and respectfully. The best way to explain the Reunion Street Festival, Your Worship, is to look at it last year. All our stakeholders viewed it as a wide success. Therefore, we intend to keep the festival largely the same while making small, practical improvements to the festival itself. Mark Garretson, his Worship's predecessor, wrote an open letter to the Whig where he outlined an important reason why the festival should continue: "As it has the potential to permanently put an end to the costly and large-scale undesired activities of the past." This does not mean that we did not learn from the festival last year. To that end, today, we've brought on board a specific coordinator in charge of liaising with our external contractor to ensure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. The festival will be run by the same professionals who ran it last year to ensure continuity and stability moving forward. So today, we are asking for a road closure between 1:00 PM and 6:00 AM, with amplified noise between 8:00 PM and 2:00 AM on Saturday the 24th of October. We only want one block of Union Street closed between Division and University Avenue. This is, of course, overlapping with what we know to be peak activity times on the Saturday of homecoming, and we need a noise exemption from 8:00 to 2:00 to make sure that we keep people at the festival enjoying and celebrating the Queen's spirit and Queen's tradition respectfully and safely. While we know that this year the festival faces less hurdles, we did not neglect consulting key stakeholders, some of which you will see here. We will also take steps to inform the community by dropping flyers into the doors of the community to inform them of the festival closer to the date. And let me conclude by saying that the AMS and its students want to be an active and responsible partner in the future of the city of Kingston. We will do this by celebrating the Queen's spirit in a respectful way, in a way that gives justice to everything the Queen stands for. And now through you, Your Worship, I'm happy to take any questions from members of council.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for your presentation. You made reference to this event provider that you had last year as well and went successfully. Could you tell us the name of that provider and give the council an idea of what kinds of things they do and what their reputation is?
Okay, thank you. Through you, Your Worship, I was just checking whether there was a legal requirement to keep it closed for now. But the event provider is Live Nation. They're the ones that did it last year as well. They're a professional event management company. Among their projects, they've been doing Canada Day at the Hill for a few years, so we trust them to be, number one, have knowledge of the festival, and number two, conduct it in a professional way.
Thank you. And just as a follow-up, have they given you an indication of their security measures that they would have to prevent drinking in public outside of the sanctioned area?
Yes. So last year, what we had was we contracted external security that we brought in, and we had one security personnel for every 100 students, sorry, so one security personnel for every 50 students. We're going to continue that moving forward. We're also going to make sure that we work closely with Queen's campus security to ensure that we deliver a safe experience for all the patrons that will be at this festival.
Councillor Neil.
Yes, and I want to thank you for your presentation and how well you did last year as well. I know that Kingston Police spoke highly of how much better Aberdeen Street and other streets were when the event was going on. Have you been in close consultation with Kingston Police and emergency services as well? And will there be some Kingston Police presence, if not at the event, surrounding the event or emergency services available?
So we have been, thank you through you, Mr Mayor, thank you councillor Neil for your question. We do have, we have spoken to Kingston Police, and they will ensure that the appropriate amount of police presence is there. They've also indicated, per the previous slide, their support for the festival, so while I can't speak on specifics, I can say that they will ensure that an appropriate amount of police presence is there.
And emergency services will be present throughout the event?
Yes, they will be.
Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Our second delegation this evening, Marianna Matovic, on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition, will appear before council to speak to new motion one with respect to the continuation of Hydro One as a publicly owned asset.
Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of Housing Action Coalition to speak in favour of a motion concerning Ontario Hydro, moved by councillor Jim Neil and seconded by councillor Jeff McLaren. Housing Action Coalition, or HAC, is a network of service providers, researchers, activists, and citizens providing analysis for housing and homeless issues in Kingston. We believe that utilities are integral part of affordable housing in any community, particularly North America. Thus, we support the motion that is in front of you tonight. I won't take much of your time. I want to give you some historical background to the issue. From 2002 until the end of 2004, Kingston Electricity Coalition fought to stop privatisation and deregulation of electricity. At that time, within a period of two weeks, the coalition collected over 8,000 signatures petitioning Kingston City Council to oppose privatisation and deregulation. The coalition presented its views before City Council in April 2002, and council passed a resolution against privatisation and deregulation. The coalition also informed City Council about public hearings regarding Bill 58, held in June in Kingston, which were never advertised in local paper by the government. Mayor of the time presented the hearings, along with 14 other concerned groups, including Kingston Electricity Coalition. The coalition also presented before the City Council on implications of Bill 210, which prompted the council of the time to pass a resolution against that bill. The majority of Ontarians, along with more than 40 municipalities, including the largest one, Toronto, voiced their opposition to privatisation and deregulation loud and clear and for good reasons. Further deregulation and privatisation is not the way to bring in conservation and alternative energy generation. They only produce more energy use without conservation. It is with sadness that we note that every prediction that was presented before the council back then was borne out. On the day we had experienced blackout, the electricity consumption wasn't at its peak. The age of Ontario's transmission system had no bearing on the blackout either. Publications suggested that the problem originated in the American Midwest. So the question is, why the domino effect happened? Did Ontario operators know that their interconnection partners allowed for substandard operating conditions? Were they informed about the unfolding disaster and its implications? The Quebec system, on the other hand, which had full interconnection protection in place, enjoyed uninterrupted power as their grid disconnected automatically. The government also ignored municipal demands for a freeze on future sale of hydro assets. Immediately following the passage of the municipal resolutions, the government sold Bruce to a private consortium for approximately 10% of its replacement value. This sale had robbed Ontario's consumers of a sum between $30 and $60 billion in revenue for the remainder of the plant life. Our local services had been hammered, as had our commercial sector, and vulnerable citizens had been unable to pay their inflated hydro bills. People had been subjected to the fear of going through a Canadian winter without electricity. It was like facing an ice storm that was going to last five months. When we introduce new measures, we have a responsibility to make sure not to harm the most vulnerable in our society. High prices are a punitive measure and would hurt most those who can least afford them.
30 seconds.
There is a significant population here in Kingston which can ill afford to pay utilities bills at the present. A common argument of the time was that tenants whose rent is all-inclusive wouldn't be hurt. However, the rent review board allowed for increases greater than 3.9% under extraordinary circumstances such as jumps in cost of electricity. In addition, rent controls for newly vacated apartments were eliminated. For all these reasons, we urge you to support the motion that is in front of you tonight.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have no briefings tonight. Are there any petitions to present? Councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to present a petition of 571 signatures regarding the upgrade of the baseball softball facilities at Kingston. And the petition reads, "The baseball fields in Kingston have been so poorly maintained for so long that they no longer meet the standards that seem to be reached in other municipalities like Coburg, Oshawa, Napanee, and pretty much everywhere else. It's time to let our city leaders know that our kids deserve better." So, the petition.
Thank you. So you can just provide that to the clerk. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. Concerning the first motion, we, the undersigned, draw the attention of the following: that Hydro One, its assets, its surpluses, and its services are part of the Commonwealth of the people of Ontario, and that the people of Ontario are better served with public control and with a public, municipally or provincially owned utility. Therefore, we call on the council of the city of Kingston to take a strong stance against privatisation of Hydro One and communicate the profound concern of our community to the Ontario Government by passing this petition to the appropriate officials in the Ontario Government. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other petitions. We do have some motions of congratulations and condolence. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stroud, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Kingston Police Deputy Chief Angie McNeely for being named a member of the Governor General's Order of Merit of the Police Forces. This honour recognises McNeely's more than 30 years of service with the Kingston Police Force and her ongoing dedication to supporting victims of domestic violence and sexual abuse in our community. McNeely will be presented with the Order of Merit in Ottawa on September 15th. Congratulations. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Stroud, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family of Flora MacDonald, who passed away at the age of 89 on July 26, 2015. MacDonald served our community as Member of Parliament for Kingston and the Islands for 16 years, and later went on to become the first female Secretary of State for Foreign Affairs, among other high-profile leadership roles. MacDonald was a generous contributor to the community through various philanthropic endeavours and will be sorely missed by the community at large. Our thoughts are with her family during this time. Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Neil, that the condolences of City Council and the city of Kingston be shared with the many friends and family of Vince Maloney, who passed away August 3rd. Vince was a former Reeve of Pittsburgh Township and a longtime community and labour activist who worked diligently on many social justice issues. He was always active politically, joining the CCF, and also running a number of times as an NDP candidate, and engaging in countless campaigns at every level. He worked 32 years at Alcan and was very active in the United Steelworkers, and was also a past president of Kingston District Labour Council. He was ever a champion of people and their rights. He will be missed. And there is one more motion on the addits. Moved by councillor Boam, seconded by Mayor Patterson, that the congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to councillor Allen and his partner Rebecca on their recent marriage, held July 25, 2015. Congratulations to the happy couple. And I believe that they are away on their honeymoon tonight, so that's why councillor Allen is not here. Okay, so with that, we will call the question. Mr Clerk? Please vote. And that carries. We have no deferred motions tonight, so I'll ask for report 75 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor George, that report number 75 from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are a large number of clauses. We almost ran out of the alphabet. Items A through W, so would anyone like any of them separated? Councillor Neil.
G, please.
Okay. So, seeing no other separations, oh, deputy mayor Stroud.
A. I. N. And O.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, NW. Sorry, on the addits.
All right. Any other separations?
No.
Okay, so first, we will deal with the items that have not been separated, so we'll just go through those. So item B is the Unopened Road Allowance Access and Improvement Agreement over a portion of the unopened road allowance on part of Lot 41 between Concessions 5 and 6. Item C, a word of contract, containers for the city of Kingston's Source Separated Organics Programme. Item D, report on delegated approval and signing authority in relation to the Cultural Services Department. Item E, potential transfer of selected materials from the Cataract Way Archaeological Research Foundation collection to the city of Kingston. Item F, stop-up, close, declare surplus, and dispose of road allowance lying west of 2268 Princess Street. Item H, Gore Road former standpipe site repurposing plan. Item J, single-source service contract with WPS Automated Parking System. Item K, Kingston Interoperability Safety and Security Project Management System, single-source purchase. Item L, lease for a public parquet on Kingston Community Health Centre lands. Item M, MTO request for noise exemption, Howe Island County Ferry. Item P, a word of contract for thirteen sixteen to thirteen eighteen Princess Street Land Use Planning and Development Services. Oh, so we've separate... We've separated Item P? P is... There's an amended report, is that right? Q... So... So we'll deal with Item P after this, is that right? Yeah, I am gonna get to your item as well. Mr. Clerk?
Your worship, with respect to Item P, if you put on the addendum as follows and you're willing to accept that, you can take that as a given and just move on.
So I think we'll deal with Item P, just everyone noting that that's with the amended recommendation as it appears in the addits. That's okay. Item Q, listed property, demolition of accessory structures, forty-seven Brock Street, Victoria Park. Item R has been separated for Counselor Hutchison's pecuniary interest. Item S, Large Renewable Procurement Programme Municipal Agreements. Item T, Queen's University, two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty License Agreement, City Arenas. Item U, Boys and Girls Club of Kingston and Area Agreement. And Item V, partnership with the Seniors Association, Kingston Region Parking Lot Expansion and Service Provision. So we will call the vote on all of those items. And that carries. So circling back to the beginning, Item A, the Queen's Alma Mater Society Temporary Road Closure Request, two thousand and fifteen Homecoming Events. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. So I just wanted to draw council's attention to two items of communication we received, number nineteen dash four forty and nineteen dash four four three. The first one addressed to the CAO from the VP advancement, Thomas Harris at Queen's, and the second one from the Chair of the Sidneyham District Association, both to the subject of the homecoming event, road closures, and the Reunion Street Festival. We heard the delegation tonight from the AMS President, and I just wanted to say that I'm adding my voice to those in support as the AMS, the VP and Queen's Administration, and the local district associations, Sidneyham District Association, in favour of this initiative, and so I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote. And that carries. Next, we have Item G, declare surplus and dispose of municipal property being the Kingscourt branch of the Kingston Frontenac Public Library located at one fifteen Kirkpatrick Street. Counselor Neal.
Yes, I'd just like to remind people that this original motion to work collaboratively with both the library board and the school board passed unanimously here. It passed unanimously at the library board, and it's my understanding that it passed unanimously at the school board as well. I do have to say I had drafted a motion to amend it, to get some assurances, primarily because I'm a little baffled, frankly, that the school board hasn't stepped up to say that they are indeed committed to their decision. And...
So Counselor Neal, I appreciate where you're going with this. That, I think, is too far away from what we're talking about on this particular item. It was a good try, but I'm gonna have to rule you out of order on that.
I anticipated that, and I was actually hoping to get a little bit farther into the discussion, in case you weren't on your toes, but clearly you are.
I appreciate the attempt, though.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. I think I'd just like to start with a question to staff regarding the transitional period in the library service in the Kingscourt area. There's been quite a number of concerns regarding that, and I just... Because there was a newspaper article which did not provide adequate information, so I'd just like to hear a little bit more about that publicly.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you through, Mr. Mayor. I know it's not actually the topic of this report, because this report is strictly to look at surplus and disposing of the property, which is the process that we need to follow as per the last council direction. And it will be a topic that will be coming back to council. We haven't finished our work, and I did indicate that at the last council meeting when we talked about the property itself. I did indicate that we would be reporting back with more information on partnership, but because of this particular item being fairly time-sensitive, we didn't want to wait until later in September to do that. But the partnership information will be coming back to council in September.
That's great. And I guess regarding the communication of this, the concerns that I've been hearing are mainly citizens in the area who were not fully aware since the decision by the previous council to move away from providing service at this location was a while ago and wasn't reported on recently until this initiative at the last council meeting. So mostly the concerns have to do with the fact that a number of people felt that this... Here we are moving to declare it surplus and get rid of the property. So the fact that there will be library service in the area, and I know that that's information that's coming out of the partnership that we'll get later, but the fact that that is something that I would like to be able to assure the public of at this time, or as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, we will call the question. And that carries. Item I, Parking Bylaw Amendments Napier Street Area. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you, your worship. So draw council's attention to the report in question, which starts on page sixty of the package, but I'm looking at page sixty-two, where it talks about the meeting, the public meeting that was held at the Lawn Bowling Club. And I actually wanted to ask Ms. Kidd, if possible, what options were given to the residents and how we ended up with the recommendation of the time-of-day restrictions.
Ms. Kidd?
Through you, your worship. When we met with the residents, we had probably thirty-plus people who came out to have a discussion with us that evening. We discussed options that could include time-of-use restrictions, such as what we're ultimately recommending, and that's what was supported by the residents. We talked about the possibility of just implementing maximum time stays with or without metres. We talked about a permit programme, and we talked about a do-nothing option, certainly. The residents were unanimously, I'd say, in favour of going ahead with parking restrictions in a time-of-day perspective, so...
Yes, I was at that meeting. I actually counted almost fifty people, but between thirty and fifty, anyway. And I was very impressed with your handling of that. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just state that Director Kidd has been very good at responding to residents' concerns, and in this case, the unanimous support that was received at the meeting, you know, was partly due to the way that it was presented and allowing them to discuss the options and not really, you know, telling them the way it had to be. Just so everyone understands what we're talking about, so these residents were upset because all of the parking that used to be closer to campus on Earl Street and so on, in the unrestricted parking, free parking essentially, had all moved into the Napier Street and that part of Earl Street, flooding those streets completely, even though it's at least seven or eight hundred metres from campus at this point. I'm starting to wonder how far away from campus do the restrictions need to go before the free parkers finally cave in and buy a permit? But anyway, I thought it was very good, and it was a mutual beneficial, and I've received lots of feedback since that meeting, thanking me for being there, but especially thanking staff for how understanding they were. It really was a great outcome, and I think exceeded everyone's expectations. Thank you for that.
Thank you. So we will call the vote. And that carries. Next, we have Item N, Unscheduled Repairs to Catons Park. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
So on this one, just a quick point, on page ninety-four, so this is... The report starts on ninety-two, and again, page ninety-four in the body of the report talks about three areas that were examined by staff, and this is all as a result of the motion to have the city work collaboratively with the school board to offer the Cook Brothers' property. So Caton's soccer fields are right next to the Cook Brothers' property, in the same city property. And the repairs that have been recommended are a result of the examination. But in the same report, it talks about Area A, the soccer fields, which I know I'm familiar with, and Counselor Canton is familiar with, having played there, and probably Counselor Bohm as well, although I don't remember playing against you specifically. The... There was always a... There's a rumour among soccer players that the reason the grass was never in very good condition on that soccer field was because it used to be a dump or a landfill, and so it was contaminated, and that's why the grass didn't die. But this report seems to say that the surface of the soccer fields is actually not contaminated, and that the contaminated area is the Ball Diamond closer to the Beer Store. And so that... I just wanted to sort of ask a rhetorical question. So why did the school board close the door on that particular site so quickly?
Okay, so I don't think that there's anyone that can provide an answer to that question. Truly a rhetorical question, thank you. Counselor Hutchison.
I just wanted to, on this item, to thank staff for the speed in which they acted to close off the contaminated ground, which turned out to be considerably more contaminated than I think we thought. At least, it's been thought to be contaminated, but now it's proven. I think that's one of the big differences. But it certainly helped when I was interviewed by the media today to be able to say that they'd move quickly, and that they're going to... And perhaps I'll ask a question about this, is... My impression is that we will redevelop this, that we'll take the opportunity to not only overburden and cap the contaminated ground, but also to develop this park area. And that's because we would be doing it anyway in the future. That's my impression from the report, is that correct?
Mr. Follow.
Through you, your worship. That's our intention. We would reach out to the public through a consultation process and evaluate the reconstruction of the softball diamond potentially, but also we talk about improvements of grading in the backyards to the east of the current Ball Diamond and further up into Rito Street as well.
Thank you. One last question is, the large talk in the neighbourhoods around there about reopening, possible reopening of Russell Street to Rito Street, would that be affected by this redevelopment in any way?
Through you, your worship. It's our intention through the report that's presented tonight is just to look at the closed-off park areas.
I guess what I'm looking for is, according to the map, it doesn't look like you're going to go there, and I'm hoping you're not gonna make it any more difficult to open it than it is now. I'm assuming that's okay. Okay.
Commissioner Hurdle, do you have something to add to that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We don't... There are no plans to do any work in terms of roads, so what you have in front of you is strictly limited to the park and the Fields area, so that we're not looking at doing any road-related work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, at the risk of alienating all my softball friends, I'm gonna ask the question. I know from a different context that our usage of softball fields may be down, or were down in the last couple of seasons, whereas soccer pitches seem to be a growth area. Have we taken that into consideration for potential repurposing of that, or are we committed to that? And do we have the need for another softball diamond?
Mr. Follow.
Through you, your worship. So our intention is to do that evaluation of our usage of soccer fields, baseball diamonds through this process, and that's something that we would be presenting back to the community in terms of the need for, is it a softball diamond or a soccer field that would be improved on that site? So at this time, I don't know that answer, but we will continue to evaluate. We have redistributed the usage on that field to our other inventory across the city of Kingston, so we'll continue to have that discussion.
Great. Thank you for taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries. Item O is Request for Noise Exemption, Queen's University Orientation Week Event. Who separated this? Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Well, it is... My district does contain Queen's main campus. Sorry that I keep rising on all these different letters. So the Orientation Week is coming up very soon, and this, yet another noise exemption. I've heard comments from residents that there seem to be a lot of noise exemptions to do with Queen's University. They're all kind of coming in a short period of time, but I just wanted to say that this particular one is the same exact event that was held last year, and it's in an area right by the hospital where I work, where the rugby field is, Nixon Field. There are no residents in the immediate area other than during the school year, there's the Queen's undergraduate residences at Banri and so on that are nearby, but no permanent residents living in that immediate area. So the noise exemption, although still necessary, it's less... The noise that's going to come from this event is not going to impact the permanent residents, because you've got the city park on one side and the campus on the other side, and there's really just the hospital. So I guess permanent residents of Kingston General Hospital may hear the noise, and that's about it. And I'm satisfied that the noise exemption is justified. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Neal.
Yes, just very quickly. In the nineteen nineties, there wasn't nearly as much consultation between AMS and the city as there is now. And I wanna recognise and applaud AMS over the years, and yes, there appears to be a whole lot of road closures or noise exemptions that all come through at the same time, but it's because they're doing their job and requesting appropriately for those changes. I'm not gonna scold Queen's administration yet again with the idea that AMS probably does a better job. I guess I just did scold them. But AMS does do a better job than others when it comes to seeking noise exemptions and consulting with the community, and I applaud them for that. Thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote. And that carries. Item R. So Counselor Hutchison stepping away. This is Affordable Housing Project Funding for the Kingston Cooperative Homes, Inc., thirteen thirty-eight Princess Street. So I think we passed P... We passed... We just recognised that there was an amended recommendation and passed P the previous time? Is that not correct? Is that not correct? Okay, please vote. Still one person to vote. And that carries. And finally, we have item W, Federal Notice of Surplus, 22 Lake Watch Lane, Kingston Cold Dock. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Okay, so on this one, I just wanted to, and I know it's contained in the report, Report 15-360, but the waterfront access is very important to many residents. And I just wanted to have it in the recommendation spelled out. And so I checked with, well, actually, it was suggested to me by Commissioner Beach, a small amendment to just add the words at the end of that clause after lane, to add the words, including public access to a waterfront trail, those words as an amendment to the recommendation so that it's spelled out so that residents know that we, that that is a high priority for city council to use the means at our disposal, as it says in the report, to maintain that access.
Okay, so we have an amendment moved by Deputy Mayor Stroud, seconded by Counsel Shell. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, we will call the vote. This is on the amendment. So still one person to vote. And that carries. On the motion as amended. And that carries. Okay, Report Number 76 from the CAO.
Point of order?
Counsel Hutcheson.
Do we do item P? Because I think we missed it.
So.
P for Peter.
P.
Because I have a conflict and I didn't see it come up. I think it was held to the end and then we changed how we're doing it.
Okay, so item E was not separated, but Counsel Hutcheson, would you like to have it separated? So what we'll do is we'll do a revote then of item E. So E is the potential transfer of selected materials from the Cataract Way Archaeological Research Foundation collection to the City of Kingston. Sorry, P, item P. Thank you. So we need Counsel Glover to help us with the code so we, so I hear properly. So item P is the Award of Contract for 1316 to 1318 Princess Street Land Use Planning and Development Services. So we will do a revote on item P. Let's vote. And that carries. Okay. Onto Report 76.
It's moved by Counsel Bohm, seconded by Counsel Stroud. The Report Number 76 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted, clause by clause.
Okay, so Clause 1 is the Capital Project Status Report, Second Quarter 2015. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Item 2, Brownfield Property Tax Financial Assistance, 575 to 601 Princess Street, 510 Frontenac Street and Laneway. We'll call the vote. And that carries. And Item 3, Brownfield Property Tax Financial Assistance, Assistance 468 and 480 Princess Street. Please vote. And that carries. Report 77 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee. Who has Report 77?
I'm so busy getting hit in the arm here, I wasn't aware. It's my pleasure to present Report 77 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee for consideration by council. Thank you.
It's moved by Counsel Hutcheson, seconded by Counsel Oxanik. The Report Number 77 of the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
So there are two clauses. Would anyone like them separated? So seeing no, we will vote on them together. Clause 1 is the Kingston Commemoration Strategy, 2015 to 2024 Final Report. And Clause 2 is the Queen's AMS University District Neighborhood Improvement Plan, Phase 2 Proposal. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report 78 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
Yes, it's my pleasure to put forward Report Number 78 duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
It's moved by Counsel O'Neill, seconded by Counsel Hutcheson. Report Number 78 from the Environment, Infrastructure and Transportation Policies Committee.
So there are three clauses. Would anyone like a separation? So we will vote on them as a whole. Item 1 is the Regional Material Recovery Facility Update. Item 2 is the KEIF Strategic Work Planning Session for 2015 to 2018. And Item 3 is the Change of KEIF Committee Date. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Report 79 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee.
Thank you, your worship. It's my pleasure to present the report, Report Number 79, from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, and I ask that it be moved and adopted.
It's moved by Counsel Holland, seconded by Counsel Candon. The Report Number 79 from the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee be received and adopted.
Just the one clause, options for accessible parking spaces and single front yard parking pads. Counsel Neal.
Yes, I want to thank Counsel Holland for recommending that this be referred to this committee, where it's my understanding it passed unanimously. And I think this is an excellent motion, and I'm looking forward to the discussion and the debate that will happen if this passes with a report that will come back to EITP and then go, come forward again here to council. I just want to remind, you know, sometimes we make decisions that affect large numbers of people in a really positive way, whether it's the revitalization of Victoria Park or years ago, the revitalization of the Memorial Center. Those things affect a whole community or several districts. There are also things that we do here that positively affect a smaller number of people, but I think they're just as important. Those of us that were on council last time will remember the first really contentious issue that we faced was backyard chickens. And it was going to be the end of civilization as we knew it. And that ended up barely passing. And four years later, when I asked staff about it, there were just over a dozen people that had actually gotten certificates, and there was nobody that had ever complained about it. But we spent days debating that. And I think, I think sometimes we just need to move ahead and do something positive for a small number of people who it very positively affects. And that's why I'm hopeful that this, this motion, which, if it passes and comes back through council and gets approved, I doubt if there's going to be more than a couple of dozen people that this positively affects. But it will indeed positively affect people's lives who need an ability to stay in their homes or need an ability for accessible parking on their street. And so I'm very hopeful that this can come back to us for our consideration in the timelines prescribed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Holland.
Thank you, your worship. The, when the discussion took place at the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, first of all, people were very surprised to find out that this was going the route that it did go. People on the committee felt that this was an accessibility issue, not a parking issue, for example. And so their input was much needed. We put forward some recommendations, some amendments, a few wording changes, and also asked that, just to draw your attention to the, one of the final clauses, that there be an information report presented and that there would be a public meeting hosted at one of our committee meetings. And I think this is essential because anecdotally, we heard when this came to council the first time about a constituent who had great difficulty bringing her groceries home after going out and shopping and using her car. And so stories like that, these are not, as Counsel Neal has drawn our attention to, these are, while we may not all be affected by accessibility, this is a human rights issue. And in fact, the very purpose of social programs in their origin were to address the needs of people who had accessibility challenges dating back to issues coming out of the wars. So I think for the people who are affected by this type of accessible issue, accessibility issue, it is of great concern and therefore I hope that as we see these recommendations come forward, we are keeping in mind that this isn't a matter of downtown real estate for parking purposes. It's a matter of being able to maintain your dignity and your quality of life. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick point, your worship. Just in the context, we're going to have time to, this is going to come back and it's going to go to EITP. But the, the parking changes that I was talking about earlier when Ms. Kidd spoke about Napier Street flooding, whole blocks are flooded with people looking for free parking. That is actually one of the root causes of the problems that is, that this motion seeks to address. And, and the goalposts are actually shifting. So the, in the places, is absolutely correct, in the places that have unrestricted parking, where you have bumper to bumper parking all day long for commuters looking for free parking, this motion is absolutely relevant and necessary. But in the places where permit parking has been implemented, that actually has gone away. So I hope that is also taken into account at the EITP when we discuss it because it's also an overall parking issue. Thank you.
Okay, so we will, Counsel Hutcheson.
I just want to say I've got some grave concerns about this motion. I don't think it's a human rights issue for starters, but it is a parking issue and it, people parking in the front lawns of, or putting parking pads in their front lawns in the downtown areas especially, but in some of the outer areas as well, is a serious problem and not welcomed by neighbors. And so I think we should approach this with some caution as to where it's going. People in general don't want to live in a parking lot. And the, the city doesn't want people covering up services, utilities that they're going to have to break through a cement pad to get to. So there are controls over that now to some extent, so they'll have to be taken into account. And the thing is, once you put the pad in and you've allowed it, how do you take it back out for the person who follows who doesn't need an accessible space? And so a couple of cases I could think of, people have actually blocked off the laneway which would have allowed them to park, or it might have even predated them. The laneway has been blocked off. They could have parked and get into the backyard to park, but that's disappeared and now they think that's the only place they can park, but it's never been legal, none of it. And so I take it it's going to report here, so we're not really commending ourselves to a great deal, but there's a considerable amount of elements that have to be taken into account that go far beyond what this motion takes and is pointing to. Couple of things is considering allow for on a case by case basis, not quite sure what that even means because it's a policy with such general guidelines and strictures. So it's, it's going to have to accommodate itself to those things. And then it also said get an accessible parking space immediately. I'm not sure what that means either. You're going to have to go through the process. So like I say, I've got some concerns about this and I do know that the front yard parking is an issue. Any illegal front yard parking is also another issue. And the city has to be able to enforce these rules and administer it in some reasonable way. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments, we will call the vote. And that carries. So nothing from committee of the whole. We do have a number of information reports. I'll go through them. If you have any questions, then just, just raise your hand. So number one, Second Quarter Operating Budget Status Report for 2015. Number two, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of June 2015. Number three, Report on Delegated Authority Bylaw, 2014-141 for real estate transactions. Counsel McLaren.
Thank you. I just have a quick question with regards to city as landlord in the report on page three of five. I noticed that some of the leases that we have include plus property taxes and some of them do not say plus property taxes. And I'm wondering if that's an oversight or is that, that we have three different deals here?
Is that a question that staff is ready to answer now or do we want to get back to counsel later? Commissioner Beach?
Just clarification on the leases that he's looking at. Is it on page four or five, two, 326?
Counsel McLaren, what was the page?
325 of the council package, third, fourth, and fifth bullet on the bottom of the page.
of the page.
So in terms of the leases that we sign, there are a number that are viewed to be commercial leases that are at market rates. And in those leases, the, the lease also requires that they pay the assessment value and that they're directly paid by the party that we lease to. In the case where we don't charge municipal taxes, it would be in a case of a community lease, so it would fall under our community leasing policy. So we have facilities like the Memorial Centre, other areas where we lease out to community groups. So if they qualify under our community leasing policy, they are not charged municipal taxes and we have to have a municipal capital facility, description of that facility. But if they are a commercial lease, then we require that they pay taxes.
So if I may just clarify, the second bullet in which we're licensing to Jay Patry, is he paying taxes or not?
I can provide the specific details on the second and third bullet tomorrow. But if there is a, if there's a market rate, then they don't necessarily pay, it's tied into that market rate for the parking. And I'll give you a more detailed description tomorrow.
Thank you.
Just a note for, for council, if you do have a question for an information for running report, if, sometimes if you can give staff a heads up, just so that they're prepared to answer that question, that would be great. Okay, number four, Q2 report on agreements executed under delegated approval and signing authority. Number five, intended to demolish a listed property under section 27.3 of the Ontario Heritage Act, 101 to 109 Princess Street. Councillor Neil.
Yes, just for my edification and other members of council and the public, can you tell, explain to me what the, what the timeline will be? I understand that the heritage committee passed a motion requesting designation rather than listing. And I've also heard the term heritage easement used as well, to kind of lock down certain things. So could you explain to me what the legal timelines under the Heritage Act will be? And how this may come back as information to council?
Mr Hurrell.
Through you, Mr Mayor. So the timeframe that council has to make a decision on demolition is 60 days. So it was submitted on July 21st, so that would put it by my calculation at September 18. So there are two council meetings left in order to make that decision. The heritage committee did pass a motion which will be coming to council on September 1st. We are working to bring information back to council as well in regards to the demolition for the same time, because we want to make sure council has all of the information, so council's not having to make a decision on one thing in absence of information on something else. So we have been working closely with the property owner, their consultant, our consultant as well, that we've retained to do an analysis. And we have been looking at a number of things, including the condition of the building underneath the stucco, because it is important to understand what can be preserved, if anything can be preserved that's underneath. And also having some conversation with the property owner around a potential heritage easement agreement. So all of that information will be brought back to council and we are working towards the September 1st meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, and number six, 2014 priority status matrix, status update, and 2015 priority status matrix. Deputy Mayor Stroud.
Yes, I have a question about the matrix. So going through the, the various things, it's a fascinating document, by the way, and thank you very much for putting that together. So, for example, I'll just use an example here to help council understand how it works. So if you look under, and it's, it's really nice the way it's organized by strategic priority, the six priorities that, that we've identified. So if you go through to the fourth priority, for example, Green the City, it's got, there's 11 things on the matrix, and the one I'm going to use as an example is on page 360, the very last one. You guys will remember this, this was my motion for the KMP trail, to try to have it done for the 150th anniversary. I'm just using it as an example. So that, so that new motion was passed, and okay, it's already on the matrix. It's, it's for Q3 2015, which is what the motion said. So that, it got slotted into the matrix. But I'm wondering what happens to the, the things that were on the strategic planning session, that were identified specifically and that are going to be in the strategic planning document? Do they make their way on the matrix on their own, or do they require independent motions of council?
Say, Johann.
Through you, Mayor Patterson, thank you for the question. Yes, they, they will eventually get on the matrix once we get clarity of scope. So when, when we presented some of the implementation plan, I indicated that that time we would need to explore some additional things with council. Once we have those things determined, then they will end up on the matrix as specific initiatives under that particular category. So some of the things that are already on the matrix were things that were reported in June, as you know, they would be showing us complete. There will be things coming in September that we're working on right now that will very much move forward on some of the initiatives that we had identified for September. That implementation document will be used for the four-year term, in terms of both the background and, and the scope as it evolves over the timeframe. The document that is also attached as appendix B here, that if you have a color copy, is colored, I believe it's mostly blue, it shows all of the initiatives that had been left on from the previous council that have been completed. Very few of them have been removed simply because they don't fit as priorities and/or they're, they were duplicate, but we wanted to clean it up. But the reality is, is that, and as we had indicated, the strategic plans have a transition phase into the next council, as, as the ones for this council will have. And that's what we're trying to show in this report, that now that we've got the implementation plan for the new strategy, this document is phasing into what now becomes appendix A. Almost all of the recommendations that come by, from council in terms of additional work will end up on here unless they're very minor, in which case we will manage them effectively through the commissioners' offices. But for the most part, everything will be recorded here in one way or another.
Thank you much, very much for that excellent explanation.
Okay, seeing no other questions, miscellaneous business, we do have one motion of council that's required, that Ms Beben Jennings, executive director, Kingston Arts Council, be appointed to the arts advisory committee as a technical representative. Moved by councillor O'Sannick, seconded by councillor Neil. And that carries. New motions. Number one, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren. Whereas Hydro One is a public asset owned and paid for by generations of residents, ratepayers and taxpayers in Ontario, and whereas a public utility's surpluses stay in the province and have contributed to our commonwealth, and whereas as a public service it has helped our province become the industrial heartland of Canada, contributing to generations of economic growth, and whereas as a public asset, our provincially elected legislature has been able to appropriately and accountably set electricity policy over time, such as green energy initiatives and the stewardship of nuclear energy. Therefore be it resolved that the city of Kingston states that it supports the continued operation of Hydro One as a publicly owned asset, and furthermore, that the sale of any Hydro One assets be limited solely to the sale of, to other public bodies, such as Ontario municipally-owned utilities, and that this motion be shared with Kingston and the Islands MPP Sophie Koala, MP Ted Shu, Ontario Premier Kathleen Nguyen, and opposition leaders Patrick Brown and Andrea Horath, as well as Association of Municipalities of Ontario, the Electricity Distributors Association, and all municipalities in Ontario with populations over 30,000. Councillor Neil.
Thank you. And to begin with, I'd like to thank councillor McLaren for having lots of input on this motion, and also Commissioner Keach, who also helped out with some of the terminology and some of the wording that we see before us. It's, it's a very troubling and interesting kind of history of the proposal, the whole history of Hydro, Ontario Hydro is interesting. It initially, at the turn of the 20th century, was a private utility. It was actually a conservative government, ironically, that took it over and made it a public utility. And they actually reduced the, the charges by 60% by taking it over publicly. It operated for 90 years at the exact same rate as a utility. From 1905 to, to, for 90 years, it operated without the kind of increases we're facing now. It was the former Harris government that initially brought in legislation to privatize, to sell the assets. And it was a done deal. They said it was a done deal. The courts said that they could not, in fact, without a pleb, without a referendum, sell the utility. So like upper-tier governments are wont to do, they passed a bill to change the rules so they could. However, there was such a huge uproar. Toronto Star did a, an independent poll and found that 90% of Ontario voters were opposed to privatization. That was in, in 2002. And so the Harris government backed away from it. 80% of their own self-proclaimed conservative voters were opposed to it. So they backed away from it in 2002. But what they did do was they split it into three entities. And that, ever since that kind of semi-privatization took place, rates have increased 320%. That's over 10 times the increase in inflation since, to, since in the last 15 years. So it's, it doesn't make sense to take a public asset that's owned and paid for over the years by Ontario citizens and just offer it up in order to be able to balance a budget in the short term. That's one of the things that's really troubling. There have been, Enveronix did, just recently, in the last couple of months, a poll at a number of places in the province, and Kingston was one of those places. This is an independent polling company, very reputable. 81% of, of Kingston residents are opposed to the privatization of, of Ontario Hydro, Hydro One. And again, the current government are saying, it's okay. It's a done deal, but don't worry about it. We'll control the pricing and we'll control the oversight. And in...
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I'll reserve a little bit of time to speak last. But the, the reality is that, that in October 2014, the current government, the current premier swore up and down that, that Hydro One would not be, would not be privatized. It's very well in, they don't call it privatization, they call it asset recycling now.
Thank, thank you councillor Neil.
But they are selling it off, and I'll speak again at the end.
So you do have the right to continue your comments after everyone else has spoken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Stroud, will you take the chair?
I take the chair and I recognize you.
Thank you. I appreciate that there are concerns about the privatization of Hydro One, or whatever the government is, is proposing to do here. And I do believe that there are times where it is appropriate for the city to comment on provincial policy or on federal policy. However, I think it's very important that we do so in a strategic manner, considering the big picture. So here's the concern that I have. Next week, I'm going to be down at the conference for the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. I'm going to be meeting with the Minister of Transportation, I'm going to be meeting with the Minister of Economic Development, and I'm going to be asking the province for money. I'm going to be asking for money for our airport expansion, I'm going to be asking for money for transit, I'm going to be asking for money for the third crossing. And the money that I'm going to be asking for is coming from the provincial government's infrastructure fund, that is going to come from the sale of Hydro One shares. So it's going to be really awkward if we take an official position as a city, that we don't like what the province is doing, but by the way, can you give us money anyways? That context matters. So I can appreciate that as individual councillors, we may disagree or we may have concerns, and that's fine. I appreciate that as a community, there might be concerns. But we need to understand the implications of taking an official position as the city of Kingston, when there are municipalities all over the province that are gunning for the same infrastructure money that we are. And we're giving the province a reason to look at other municipalities over us. And that is a huge cost. So I really want council to think very carefully about the benefits versus the costs of passing this motion. Given the context of what's going on here, I'm going to urge council not to vote for this motion. Thank you very much. If I can have the chair back.
Thank you, and you have the, the chair back.
Thank you. Councillor George.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, it's, it's putting us between a rock and a hard place. However, the one thing I will offer to the mover of the motion is that this was brought up at AMO, not in our June meeting, the one prior to that. And I can assure you that, that the, the members of AMO that were in attendance and spoke at that time were adamant that they did not want to see this privatized. So the support is there, and I believe that message is being, is already being sent to, through the minister, and I don't recall the name that goes with this particular portfolio, but the message has been sent and that the municipalities, and I know especially a lot of the small urban municipalities are extremely concerned, especially those that don't have, as we do, we have our, our own Kingston utilities and have the opportunity that we could possibly bid on and, and purchase some of these shares or interest in the infrastructure that's out there for the balance of Kingston potentially surrounding area. And there are very few of us around. But I, I'm, I'm a little bit of a gambler, and I, I think I'm going to support the motion for the simple reason that I know that it has been spoken to at the AMO board level, and the message is being sent. And I can't say that I have witnessed any other motions come through from other municipalities, but potentially they are out there. I, I don't know that they are, but potentially they are. And I don't think that it will do a lot of harm, but I can still, I can still understand the rationale behind what the mayor has said. And it would be nice to be able to keep all, all your cards close to the chest and be able to deal them as needed to, to be able to obtain some of those infrastructure grant monies that we need so badly here. But I still think that, you know, we'll have an opportunity to get down on our knees and beg for that. And I know I'm, I'm going to be there with, with the mayor to do that next week, so. But I, I am going to support the motion tonight, be only for the simple reason that I know, and I don't want to sound repetitive, but that it has been spoken to, and, and there may be others that are, are moving in the... that are moving in the same direction as we are, to simply send a message that this would be our preference to keep it in the public sector and/or purchased through municipalities that have publicly-run utilities as we do as an option.
Thank you. Next hand I saw was councillor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to councillor George's point about other municipalities, if we were to pass the motion, then we would be the 70th in the province. So there will be others who will be in a similar position. When this proposal was first announced, and it moved forward quite quickly, but there was some discussion early on about where these funds would go. And a lot of them would be going in the Toronto area in terms of investment in infrastructure. And there are specific projects that have been identified that are waiting for the funds. I'm not going to go into, I think councillor Neil might have more to say about the really poor deal that the province would be getting in selling this off. We wouldn't be getting the kind of amount that anyone would like to see for this kind of public asset. So I think if it comes down to whether or not we're going to have a third crossing or whether or not ratepayers, homeowners in Kingston, people trying to get by for whom the marginal cost increase mean the difference between being able to stay in their home or not, I would choose to support this motion and to support maintaining a public asset. Thank you.
Thank you. I see hands flying. councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Doing a little research on this, I came across a statement, and I'm going to direct this question to Mr Keach because he possibly knows and has an answer, that the government is not only proposing to sell off Hydro One, but also possibly looking at local LDCs as well. And I just don't, that really set me back. So I'm just wondering if you have any information on that.
Mr Keach.
Through Your Worship, currently, my understanding is the government is looking at a share offering for Hydro One. They are not doing the same for local LDCs, and to be quite blunt, they could not do that. You own, the city of Kingston owns Kingston Hydro. The province does not own it. Now, sort of taking that one step further, there is, and there has been for some time, a fair amount of pressure from the province on the smaller LDCs. So LDCs is local distribution companies like Kingston Hydro. So the province has been putting a fair amount of pressure on us to, or I guess on you as a shareholder, to sell the LDC. The view is from the province, from the minister, Mr Venergi Shirelli, that there will be much more efficiencies to be gained if there are half a dozen very large LDCs as opposed to 70 of the smaller ones. I think our industry struggles with that because some of the smaller ones actually have some of the lower rates and some of the best service delivery models, but the province has been pushing for us to sell. So I think just a little bit of not clear communication, the province is not looking at selling the LDCs. They are trying to encourage you to sell your LDC.
That sounds like a really bad idea. Okay, so thank you for that clarification. There are a number of reasons to support this. I would follow on, just briefly on what councillor George said, this will be the third mayor I've served under. They've all said the same thing at various times, and nothing has fallen out of the sky yet. So go forth with your spear and do what you can. So anyway, I just want to add some more evidence to this. There's been some research done in the United States on this and comparing private local distribution companies or utilities to public ones. And a fellow named, I'm not sure I can pronounce it, Kooka, studied 15 studies, and eight found that public firms have lower prices or higher efficiency. Four found public and private firms have equal costs or efficiency. Two found mixed results. And just one found private firms to have higher efficiency. The evidence therefore states to show that public firms are more efficient or have lower costs than private ones. He did his own research and found basically the same thing. Of course, it's not just about measured on price or cost, although that's extremely important, obviously, for the reasons that councillor Holland pointed out. I know where I work, we have middle and low-income people, and the cost of electricity really is starting to hurt people. But it's also about accountability and the ability to influence the corporation that controls the prices, controls the services, and the administration of the whole situation. That's the one point I wanted to make. And another one I wanted to make, which gives pause, I think, is when you look at selling an asset, you can look at the value of the assets or the profitability or the earnings. And analysis was written up in the Toronto Star on this, and they found that the deal that the province is going for, which is $15 billion, doesn't work under either one of those analyses, either earnings or assets. That Ontario Hydro currently is making $745 million returning to the province right now. When you work that out and see what you should get, you should be getting at least $20 billion to $36 billion. So it seems that there's reason to believe that this is just a bad deal. It's not just not to be recommended because, for a number of reasons, but it's just a bad deal. And I think the main thing that people are concerned about is that over time, you lose that revenue flow, you lose that control, and then it's much harder to control electricity prices or have some influence on them as we do now. I think we'd all agree that certain decisions made are regrettable or are not very good, but when you don't have a say, when you don't have the power through your governments to influence that, you even less say in what's going on and less chance to influence what's going on.
Thirty seconds.
And so I would encourage people to vote for this motion because there are multitude of reasons, good reasons to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is deputy mayor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I feel very strongly about this, and I'm wholeheartedly against the sale of our very valuable public asset. And I've already indicated to the mover and secondor that I would support the motion. However, the timing is very problematic, and I actually am wondering whether we can find a solution that would support His Worship. Because, you know, the public assets are very, very important, but so is the city's reputation and ability to negotiate with provincial government. And if we're working at cross purposes, it's not ideal. Now, so how can I support the motion and also not undermine His Worship for next week? And the only thing I can think of is if we defer the motion until September 1st, seems very transparent and in a way to keep our cards close to our chests to us, but to the province who's not watching, it might just work. Because His Worship has been there for us every council meeting, whether he agrees with the positions the individual takes or not, he has allowed all of us to have our say, and I think that we need to show the same courtesy and not undermine him at this time.
Point of order? If this is a motion to defer, we need a secondor, and then I don't believe it's debatable.
That is true, but councillor Stroud has not yet put the motion forward. I believe he's talking about putting the motion forward.
I promise councillor Neil that you will know when I put the motion forward. So I'm basically thinking on my feet here of whether or not I should put the motion forward because I'd actually rather find a better solution than that, but I don't see how that's possible. And I won't get to speak again. I think I've said enough. I guess I will just move to defer if I have a secondor.
Okay, so there is...
For September 1st or until after the AMO conference.
Okay, so cleanest, so there's a motion to defer put forward by deputy mayor Stroud to the September 1st council meeting. Is there a secondor? Seconded by councillor Bone. Councillor Neil is correct. Motion to defer is not debatable except to time or place. Is there any discussion or debate to time or place? Seeing none, we will call the vote on the motion to defer. Still one person to vote? And that carries by a vote of eight to four. New motion number two, moved by councillor Ossanik, seconded by councillor Cannon. Whereas members of the baseball community presented to ARC committee on July 8th, 2015, addressing concerns regarding the maintenance and safety of the city's baseball diamonds. And whereas the petition has been circulating, collecting over 500 signatures, asking the city to improve the maintenance of the baseball diamonds. And whereas members of the baseball community spent several hours inspecting the city's baseball diamonds, documenting and photographing 148 issues, of which 47% of them related to player safety, at Kingston's four Class A baseball parks, Bayridge, La Salle, Woodbine, and Cloverdale sports fields. And whereas the safety of all players is important to the city, and whereas Kingston City Council approved a turf management plan for the city's sports fields in December 2013, therefore be it resolved that staff provide a report to the November ARC committee that documents, A, which of the 148 issues submitted were addressed in 2015, which issues will be addressed in 2016, and which issues cannot be addressed at all and why; B, what parts of the city's turf management plan were able to be implemented in 2015 and which parts will be implemented in 2016; and that a meeting be held with the baseball user group committee in early October 2015 to, A, present the maintenance schedule and guidelines currently in place for the baseball diamonds; B, share the high-level maintenance schedule from Oshawa and Whitby with the baseball user group as submitted at the July 8th, 2015 ARC committee meeting under correspondence from councillor Ossanik; C, ask the user group to go back to their respective organizations to compose a wish list to facility upgrades; and that a further meeting of the user group be held at the end of October 2015 to compile the wish list, prioritize the upgrades, and establish timelines, whether it be over the next five years and a bit at each facility each year, or upgrading one facility at a time each year. And that the information decided by the two meetings of the user group be included in the staff report to ARC and that staff report to ARC in February 2016 regarding a process to seek corporate sponsorship for the facility upgrades. councillor Ossanik.
Thank you, Your Worship. In May, I started to hear concerns about the condition of the city's baseball fields. As our rep teams started to play in tournaments in southern Ontario, in Napanee and Whitby and Oshawa and Coburg, they started to send pictures of what those baseball diamonds looked like compared to our baseball diamonds. And like they say, a picture is worth a thousand words. So a petition started to circulate amongst the baseball users. To me, the importance of the petition is not really the 571 signatures, but more about the comments that were part of the petition. So we can see it's not just a couple of people in the baseball community that are concerned about the fields, but about a quarter of all of those people that signed the petition wrote in their own personal comments. And so you can just see how widespread it is across the parents, the baseball players themselves, and from the coaches. A delegation was heard at Arts Recreation Committee in early July. As we know, delegations only have five minutes, and so they had to show a very quick sampling of the pictures of the baseball diamonds that they were concerned about. And when we asked staff, you know, what they would do with this information, they said if the community could come up with a specific list of concerns, then they could try to address them. So after the committee meeting, the dedicated baseball coaches that presented that night, they went to our diamonds, they took pictures, and I would say they spent hours then documenting the picture to the concern and each baseball diamond at our four major parks in Kingston. So just the time that they put into these documents, I have total respect for them because I know that would be very time-consuming. So in summary, like Woodbine Park had 66 issues, Cloverdale 36 issues, La Salle 29 issues, Bayridge Park 17 issues. Now, we acknowledge not all these issues can be addressed this year. They take planning, some would be, you know, in 2016, but maybe in here, maybe there are some quick wins that could occur this fall. I also want to acknowledge that Public Works is very busy. We all know from June and July, even still now, YO Parsnap is consuming a lot of their time, just keeping up with the grass cutting in our parks and also on our roadways, you know, trimming fences. I know from the amount of emails I get, the number, you know, the top concerns are always bylaw property standards or Public Works. And with all of the, you know, emails and requests and customer service work orders that go to Public Works, I would say, I would even go as far as saying Public Works is the face of our city. I would go that far. But looking at these, you know, pictures, we have to keep up with the maintenance of the baseball diamonds. I do think that's really important. The soccer community, they went through something similar back in 2007. They presented their concerns to council. We then came up with a plan to try to address it. We threw money into the soccer fields. The city also threw money into developing a turf management plan. And that plan is just starting to be implemented this summer. So part of the motion is saying how much can be implemented this year and what can be implemented next year. So a turf management plan, that's aeration, that's how many times you cut the grass, you overseed, you fertilize, all the stuff. And as we start to implement that turf management plan, it will benefit not only the baseball users, but continuing on the improvements to our soccer fields. So the last part of the motion is looking for sponsorships. Yes, some of these fixes could cost money. At the Invista Centre, we have sponsorships for our baseball, sorry, for our hockey rinks. Maybe the same thing has to come out for our baseball diamonds, you know, to get a sponsorship for our dugouts. And then if we can start to host tournaments, we can have the economic spinoff and also try to generate, you know, get our registrations up at our baseball leagues. You know, the league registrations have been going down in the past couple of years. Maybe it's because of the upkeep of our fields, right? And we know that the Blue Jays are being highly successful this year. More Canadian players are being, you know, drafted into the major leagues. Baseball is still really popular, really out there, and let's try to get our diamonds up to shape. So that's what this motion is all about. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? councillor Cannon.
Thank you, through Your Worship. I just wanted to follow up what councillor Ossanik had said. I feel like in Kingston, I'm sure we'd all agree, we have a lot of great things to be thankful for. There's a lot of good things that are going on in the city. And a lot of times, we may focus on those and take our eye off the ball of some things that may have fallen through the cracks. And it's good that, it's great that we've got an engaged community that's going to organize themselves and say, you know, here's something that I think we could do better at. And this could be the start of a very good story, similar to the Invista Centre. You know, I remember growing up in Kingston playing hockey in Wally Elmer while snow was coming through the wall onto the bench, and people said we need better hockey arenas, better facilities. Those issues were addressed and it became a big success story. This is something that could be very similar, as you mentioned, the Invista Centre with corporate sponsorships. It's the community helping out the community, and I think it's the start of a good story.
Okay, so councillor Hutchinson.
I just wanted to say that I can understand that the impetus behind this motion, we saw this at ARC, you know, they showed the slides of the playing conditions, very tall grass and lack of grooming and their sense of, basically their sense of embarrassment when they invited other teams here. So that was affecting. The, um, so that was affecting. Um, but I would like to put a caution in this, in that I'd like to ask that, well, they're not here. Um, they were, but they're not. Oh. Can you tell me how many baseball players there are playing on city parks? See, you're way too far up the, the chain for that question.
So, so councillor Hutchinson, that's a perfect example of the type of question that would be good to kind of prep staff in advance. I don't think that anybody here would necessarily have that number in their backpack.
Yes, yes, yes. And I, I actually agree with you, but, uh, it are the things to do today. But I can tell you that on the list of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, baseball does not get near the top by a long shot. Soccer's got over 5,000 players, that was a few years ago, might be more now, might be less, but, uh, baseball, not so much. So when, when we vote for this, we will be actually saying to them, let's give you, you can have a wish list, and, uh, I mean, I'm sure they have pointed out these things, we know they've pointed out these things, and we know that staff has responded. So perhaps not enough to satisfy so many people, or not enough because of circumstances, as councillor O'Sannick says, but when you give people a chance to give a wish list here, kind of ask them for it. So, um, as long as this is passed with the idea that we might have to say no in some situations, um, I, I'll, I'll vote for it unless somebody else says something even more trenchant than I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Keach.
So I, I can't address how many baseball players we have, but I would like to make a couple of comments. Um, so the list was provided to us at Public Works, and I think council is aware that Public Works is responsible for the maintenance of this. Um, and I, I just need to clarify that because that's not always understood. Uh, we have gone out and, uh, looked at the, uh, the list and just, I think, further to the comments. There's about 40 items that were on the list that we are currently dealing with, and we will be able to complete. There's probably another 60 that we will be able to complete this year, so, you know, probably what 100 will be done this year. Um, there are probably 2025 that need to be, have further, um, be looked at further and may qualify kind of into the wish list category, but, uh, I would say two-thirds of these we are comfortable that we can deal with. Um, I think as well, speaking for Public Works and myself, we are a bit embarrassed that it had to come to this point in the council direction to move forward on this, and we'd like to look at other ways of getting around this, uh, in the future, but, uh, we realize the seriousness of this, and, uh, we are currently working on it as we speak.
Thanks. Okay, so with that, we will call the vote. Are there any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, minutes.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Cannon, that the minutes of the city council meeting number 2015-18 held Tuesday, July 14th, 2015 be confirmed.
Please vote. Some tabling of documents, we have a number of communications. Is there any other business? And Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws.
So there's one bylaw that we will be separating for the cunary, which is bylaw 14, for the, uh, third item on the CAO, um, recommend report, so councillor Shell.
Yeah. So it's moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor Turner, that bylaw 14 be given its first and second reading. It's moved by councillor Cannon, seconded by councillor Turner, that bylaws one through seven and 13 be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
It's moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor George, that bylaws six through 13 be given their third reading.
Motion to adjourn, moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by councillor George. Still one person to vote. So if everyone can just revote, so we can get out of here. And that carries. Thank you very much.